Filed their pre-application already. You know, there's some concern about the fact that an HPP does pick outs and identify specific sites for which affordable housing would be appropriate in the town or be able to be developed on in the town. There is some concern about spending the money when we know we can't reach the stated goal and was it worth doing that? Again, this came out in the tenor of several different questions. There was no, there didn't seem to be any disagreement that affordable housing is needed in the town, but the disagreement or the concern came with whether this was the right vehicle at the right time, is my understanding. Now, I was only there for one night and only heard the questions they put for me. There may have been other reasons that they expressed on, you know, in other parts of their debate.
But obviously, if the housing production plan is funded out of the reserve fund, then this particular, then of course their recommendation of zero is what we would recommend also.
Right, exactly.
Who was the consultant that did the?
Karen Sonnenberg.
Sonnenberg, Sonnenberg or Sondenberg? Yeah, I'm not sure.
Sonnenberg, yeah. And she did a nice job.
You were part of that, Affordable Housing, I remember.
I was, I was on that. So.
There wasn't one more concern. They were also concerned about doing the housing production plan in advance of finishing the master plan because they do cover, they don't cover the exact same territory, but they cover similar territories. So at least one person there felt that it was important to do the master plan first, then take that data and put it into the housing production plan.
Now, I'll ask you, we can, we can discuss this in two weeks. Shall we discuss it in two weeks and then I can report to select one or should I report to the select one next week?
Relative to?
Relative to the housing production plan, whether or not Karen Sonnenberg's $4,999 proposal shouldn't go anywhere. I think we should probably discuss this in two weeks.
I think we should because I think we should see the scope of what she's proposed.
Okay.
There's got to be some assumption that she's already done.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, she's worked on this, she's got a lot of stuff.
Yes. And she's. I understand, I do not know her personally. I understand from what you said and what other people say that she's worked on this before, so she has the experience. But I'd like to see the scope to make sure that we're making our recommendation based on what she's offered to do. So, and as you say, there have to be at least two other quotes.
Okay.
I'd like clarification on a matter that has come to my attention. We discussed it once, several meetings ago. Can a homeowner or landowner keep their land off the, off the record of the housing production plan?
Now, I, that is one thing we're going to discuss, how one would identify sites, because I would certainly say that they could. But, I mean, the identification of sites is the crux of the, is a very important part of the plan, and the planning board has to be comfortable in the way it's going to be done, and they have to approve of that. And so, your question is, has not been determined, but my own feeling is that landowners who don't want their land identified as being available for affordable housing or housing development shouldn't, you know, have to fend off developers saying, "Well, I saw your, your property in the plan."
Therefore. Yes, I mean, initially, it would start, we'd start out with the maps. Bill brought in a set a few meetings back. We would start out with the maps and it would just be, you know, a number crunch of what parcel sizes, or, you know, we'd see how many parcels are of this many acres, how many parcels of that many acres, and so forth and so on. So it starts out in a number crunch, but then at some point, we will have to decide on criteria of how we decide, how we decide which parcels would be in there, and the selectmen as well.
Since they have to vote on this too.
Yes.
I mean, this is, this is a little tricky. So, think about it and let's discuss it next time.
I think that's reasonable, yeah.
Okay, now, we're getting, so we'll, we will, having had some input on these two things, we will now go to historically significant buildings submitted by the historic commission, which has to do with the Swift hat box, or hat, the Swift hat company.
Hat factory. Can you explain this in more detail? Because we were all looking in our packets before the meeting and we don't have any information of this. We don't, we don't have the language.
They didn't produce the, he didn't produce the bylaw.
Right.
Well, that is.
It makes it tricky to make a decision tonight.
Well, what it, the idea here, before we knew that Mr. Roberts now wants to move the building and presumably get some parking space credit for it, but it was to award him credit for parking spaces he doesn't have if the building is preserved. And the credit was said to be between three and six. Initially, I'd suggested three might be enough, but the historic commission, being a general, a generous group of people, thought that three to six would be, would be. So the, the idea would be that with the hat factory and the white building next door, and I guess we should explain that in the shadow of the Verizon building in Milton Village, there's a little wood structure, which has been there since, I guess, 1700 and something.
Yes, 1715.
What's the date of?
1790.
1790.
Okay, I thought it was older. Okay, good.
It's unprepossessing, but it is historically very significant, and actually, I have a picture of it in my car, when it was the nutshell and the, there were a couple of shops there, and it was really nice, and it suffered. It suffered neglect and it doesn't look so, so great now, but it could look great. In any event, it's historic, it should be preserved. The idea of allowing credit for three to six parking spaces if it is preserved, what might be enough to convince the owner that this is the way to go, because the owner needs incentives.
By preserved, do you mean preserved on site or moved and preserved?
Well, it was, the zoning was preserved on site, and I suppose that we'll have to, when we recommend, we'll have to make a recommendation that credit could be given if it is moved off-site, just to make this zoning a little, to fit with the dynamics of the situation.
I have to say, I would, not speaking as a planning board member, but as speaking as somebody who values historic buildings in their original locations, and especially something like this, which is, I understand, one of the last remaining industrial buildings of its age in our town, I would very much prefer to see it preserved on-site. So if there were a way to persuade the developer by some sort of bonus, I would be very interested in doing that.
Well.
It's a great building, it just needs to look up.
It is a great building, and Mr. Sullivan has, is here, but Mr. Roberts, who is the owner.
Right.
Is keeping his own counsel. But I suppose that's right. We will hear what people say, and if there is a push to expand the zoning for a relocation of the building, à la Suffolk Resol's house, then we, we will consider that.
Of course.
Okay. So who wants to be heard on historically significant building? Yes?
My name is Spencer Day. Almost thirty-year resident of the town cottage place. My wife grew up in town, was born in Milton Hospital, and so she's been here for over fifty-five years. And her doctor used to be Dr. Tock in that location at 98 Adams Street. That was one of the things that building was used for. So that when it was under the ownership of prior owners, it was actually used and usable, and I think it's safe to. I think it's safe to say that now that it's in different hands, it really has not been kept up in any manner, manner, shape or form, not even so much as a coat of paint has ever been applied by the current owner. The, the suggestion that, and by the way, I'm also the, I should take off my hat, I suppose. I'm also the treasurer of the Milton Yacht Club, and, and my friend Andrew, who spoke earlier, is the vice commodore of the Milton Yacht Club. I'm not here to speak on behalf of the club, but as an officer, I'd like to point out that we are butters on the park property. We pay $14,000 a year for leasing that property, and in addition to that, the club generates between $50,000 and $100,000 a year in maintenance work that we log of our members to keep up the property in and around the Milton Yacht Club, which is known as the Milton Landing, of course. And it's a public landing. We wish to maintain the character of the neighborhood, and that means that we have an interest in speaking about this property at 98 Adams. And our preference is for it to remain where it is and for preservation to take place on that site. There has been some discussion on the part of Mr. Roberts to, you know, float ideas about where it could be moved to so that he could utilize the footprint for whatever purpose he devised. So I'm here to speak against that notion.
Okay. So what do you think of the, you're actually commenting on some proposed zoning to give them a bonus to restore that building?
Right.
And so you're, you're in favor?
Well, speaking of the, actually, I'm not sure of the ins and outs of, you know, what it is that you're considering with the parking space.
It says giving him, to run a business, you have to provide a certain number of parking spaces. He doesn't have enough parking spaces there to.
Right.
Rob, much.
So my comment on that then would be, that my preference would be that that would be granted if it was on location.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Spencer. Who else wants to be heard? Yes, sir.
Steve O'Donnell, chair of the historic commission. We, as a commission, have been increasingly concerned about the loss of historic buildings and potential loss of historic buildings in town. And just having come off the loss of the Granite House last year, where there were proffers of various zoning accommodations in exchange for saving the structure, those fell on deaf ears, and the structure, of course, came down. What we were hoping to do in this case was to put in place, well in advance of imminent destruction, something where the owner or prospective buyer or developer would know upfront what he would get, if you will, in exchange for preservation. The reason we went from three to three, to as many as six spaces is that you need two-hundred, you need a parking space of each 250 feet of commercial space. If there were 750 feet per floor on two floors, this would be 1,500, which translates into a maximum of six spaces. When Mr. Roberts met with the commission, and the building, as you're well aware, is in the midst of a nine-month demolition delay period now, when he met with the commission, he indicated that he was interested in commercial space on the site as part of a mixed-use project, and admitted that he would need some sort of a variance in order to provide parking, because there is very little, if any, parking on the site. So he knows he needs parking. This is a way to get at least some of the parking that he needs. And again, we felt that if something were in place fairly near the beginning of a process to decide whether or not it were to be preserved, that it might guide. As far as what would happen if the building were moved, would some sort of parking be offered? I'm not sure. We would much prefer to see it stay where it is. As was mentioned, it is probably the only existing wood frame industrial commercial structure of that area in the town and perhaps anywhere. I mean, wood structures tend not to last. There are plenty of brick factories and such around, but Captain John Swift was a very prominent citizen of the town, prominent businessman in the town, 1790, 1800, and again, the house has been there all these years, and we think it should remain where it is. If the only way to preserve it is to move it, certainly that would be an option. The where, the how, the who's going to pay for it, I have no idea. It's not an inexpensive situation. Mr. Roberts is on record with the commission as being willing to work with anybody who would like to move it, but is very clearly not interested in doing anything to effect that result or to finance that result. So we would hope that we would have the support of the planning board in this article, and certainly would be, be willing to accept any suggestions that you would make, which would enhance the passage thereof.
Did we have, I don't quite remember. Do we have, is it a special permit that you've got the credit on?
We don't have the language in front of us.
I do. It just says that the Board of Appeals shall give credit for at least three, but not more than six.
Oh, okay. So this is, this would be the Board of Appeals, and presumably, we would be doing site plan approval. So that would guarantee a, a result, and, and in fact, you'll have to consult with the Board of Appeals, don't you? Under the.
Under the, yes, yes.
Of a historically significant building determined with the advice of the historical
commission. And we have already made that determination.
Yeah.
So.
Is that written such that it would apply to more than just this building?
Yes.
Very targeted.
It's, it's written, notwithstanding, in any business district, on a lot, including contiguous lots in common ownership, containing no more than 5,000 square feet, with a frontage of at least 75 feet, with a historically significant building determined with the advice of the historical commission, constructed before 1850. In conjunction with the preservation and rehabilitation of such building, which such changes as may be needed for a new use, but which are compatible with the historical appearance of the building, the Board of Appeals shall give credit. So any commercial district, 5,000 feet, and it might well apply to some of the buildings on High Street.
I was just going to.
Obviously, in the same area, but small houses, some of which have been commercial.
And what is this, Steve? This, what formality, is this some bylaw we have now?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with. And I have an all-house on High Street.
Okay. Chapter 10 of the general bylaws.
Oh, the general bylaws.
Yeah. Know as a zoning bylaws, by adding the following paragraph, nine to section seven, subsection C.
So we'll probably need to have our formal vote next time, so we can have all of the language in front of us.
Right. No, I think we want to, we, we'll likely approve it, but we will give it our due diligence. And thanks for, thanks for stepping up to the plate on this one.
Well, we would like very much to see this preserved.
We, this is, you know, we, we really do try to make historical preservation attractive. And you recall the last time we tried to do it, everything we did just made the owner angrier and angrier. It's, but, you know, this seems like a good, yes.
I'd love to see Mike Roberts, because, you know, we do these things, but we never seem to get to the person that.
Well, I understand that, and he had, he probably knew that this hearing was happening, and he doesn't seem to be here, so.
He did, however, come to the, the hearing, the public hearing on the demolition of the historical commission.
But, I mean, it really, if you need Board of Appeals approval and you, you, you don't play ball with the town, your task is much harder. It, this is not a, we're not punishing him. We're, we're actually, I mean, he bought this building, and it's a historical asset that needs to be preserved, and you should recognize that.
Just one other question for Steve. You know, we now do the Board of Appeals on television. Why don't you people actually let us cover your meetings?
It'd be fine.
And let, let the public see the wonderful work you people.
Very happy.
Okay, good.
March 11th is the next.
Good. Just get in touch with Mike Lynch, he's the executive.
Okay.
All right.
Good question. Should, and I don't expect us to answer this tonight, but could we maybe consider a two-tier, i.e. if it's preserved on-site, he would get the larger number of spaces. If it's preserved off-site, he could get a smaller number of spaces, and then obviously not be eligible for anything. Just trying to think of, of further ways to indicate how important saving this building is and how important it would be to save it on-site.
Well, I, I think that.
So just for consideration.
I think that the off-site arrangement would have to go to October, to an amendment of the zoning at the October.
Okay. So we don't have enough flexibility in the script to do that?
I don't see that we can, we can change this around to permit off-site buildings, especially without input. That's what he's thinking about. Okay. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Paul Sullivan. I've spoken to Mike Roberts quite a bit about this matter, and I just want to make one thing clear. I don't think he has any intention of taking the building down anytime soon, even after the nine-month period is up. My understanding of what his, his thoughts are on it is that he plans on having a comprehensive solution to the, to the building and the site. My guess is he intends to submit a, a plan of redevelopment for the site, and it may or may not include moving the building. But I don't believe he intends to demolish the building. He's going to seek support around the community to find ways to save it.
Okay. So I think that you are saying that this zoning may not be perfect, but it's better than nothing.
He's fine with it, sure.
Okay.
That's helpful.
So, and I, thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, so we likely will approve this next time, in case the Warren Committee is wondering. And now, we're going to move on to detached condominiums off Blue Hill Avenue, and we have a amended article that was sent out by email, is that, which is red and black? You've got that?
Yeah, it was in our packets, ours as well.
Okay. So who wants to be heard on, on this article? Mr. Sullivan, if you don't want to be heard, I think it will be very easy for us to. You'd better be heard, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening. My name's Paul Sullivan. I'm the applicant for, in the supporter of the citizen's petition for 591 Blue Hill Avenue. A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with the neighbors up at the Milton Public Library, the community room, and most of the director butters attended the meeting and a few other neighbors. A couple of them had already sent emails to me, and I had sent emails out and letters out to, to all the, all the butters within 300 feet, and, and sent out the original plan. What we got back from that discussion that evening was, there was a preference for three dwellings rather than four, which was fine with me. I went back to my engineer, we modified the plan to three units. I don't know if you have that plan yet.
We do have the plan.
They had something built.
Let them out.
Yeah, here it is. It's a big one.
Yeah, you've got it.
Would you like to.
Well, I could speak for some of the neighbors. I think the consensus was that.
Now, have you described, there's the.
Yeah, this is.
Locus that you're, you're talking about, 591 Blue Hill Avenue, which is the site of a abandoned greenhouse?
Yes, there's a, there's a nursery, it's like a small retail store and a greenhouse attached to the front building, and then this direction of the plan, which is this one right here. And then there's a garage and kind of a small apartment, I guess, in the rear building. It has been abandoned as a nursery for quite a few years, so it lost its non-conforming use. You know, the neighbors are obviously, would like to see the buildings removed and the place cleaned up. It is a bit of a mess. There's a lot of vines growing in the trees that are but the properties and killing trees on the edge of the property line, so. Originally, the original plan showed the private lane coming up on the southern side of the site, closer to the Brian Hagerty's property, and after speaking with him, there's a burn between the properties and this quite a row of trees there. So he was concerned about that any construction near it would, may damage the root systems of that line of trees. So we, we flipped the, the lane onto the other side, where there's very few trees on that side, especially where the lane is. Trees tend to be further deeper into the site on the north side.
Perkins Lane, is it?
Yeah, the butts, well, Perkins Lane is, is, is a combination of, part of it belongs to 610 Perkins, Brushel Road, which is the new home I built a few years back, and then it hits Mr. Hagerty's property, and it's actually his driveway from that point forward. And when I originally subdivided the property, I agreed to extinguish anybody's rights to go down his driveway, basically. He still has rights to go up Perkins Lane, up to Brushel Road, but no one can cross his property.
You're right up here. This is the house you did?
Yes. Yep.
So they're going to have access.
The house is right, right here, Mr. Chan.
It's the number.
It's, it's the house that.
610, I believe. I think it's on the.
It had some historic significance, as you recall.
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't show on the assesses plan.
Is it called 608 Brushel Road?
610.
Yeah, it's.
It's on the smaller one.
Yeah, it's on the.
It's 610 on a, on a lot of 61,792 feet?
That's the most recent assesses plan, but it unfortunately doesn't show the new home that was constructed on that lot.
But that's the lot, 61,792 square feet.
Right, yes.
And then.
Fifty percent of it's.
The lot next to it, which is.
Mr. Hagerty's.
Is 2.292 acres?
Yes.
Okay.
And the one beside his is.
And then at 608 is 21,540.
Yeah, they sent me an email. They said they, they originally were fine with the original full lot, but they wanted to just make sure that there was a landscape buffer between their property and the site. There's quite a row of trees there right now.
So the access to these proposed three new houses would be on this right of way, not on Perkins Lane?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
And you've spoken to all of.
I've, I've got a lot of the emails now, and I've exchanged emails. Most of the butters showed up that night. Mr. Tran wasn't able to show up, but I sent him an email.
Okay.
And Mr. Hagerty was there, Mr. DeMello, and then Mrs. Metro was there, McCloud, McFarland, and most, mostly director. and most, mostly director butters were, were there. And then a few other neighbors were there. So I just got the revised plan, I haven't had a chance to show it to all the neighbors yet. I did send them emails and just gave them an update.
And this revised document with the red changes in it, this would be the proposed recommendation?
Yeah, it's just some suggestions of, the largest thing that came up, the two biggest things that came up at the meeting were, they wanted to see a reduction in density, which I agreed to. And, and then in general, I think people preferred fee simple lots, if possible.
You will need to double check, because the article's already been submitted?
Right.
You need to double check with town.
Right, if it can be done.
Yeah, just to make sure everything's still in the scope.
Sure. I mean, we could, simplest thing maybe to just add the language about the ability for the planning board to approve fee simple lots as well as a condominium-type development too.
Well, you're, what you're saying that you can create lots rather than condominiums.
Yeah, I didn't have a preference either way, but, and it wasn't overwhelming, the discussion from the neighbors, but the few neighbors that did speak about it, mostly was Mr. Haggerty and maybe Mr. DeMello, they said their preference was, yeah, fee simple lots, yeah.
Would you then set up a homeowners association to take care of the common, essentially the common driveway?
Yes.
Because I'm assuming you're not going to propose this as a public road?
Right.
Question first. Mr. Sullivan, are you familiar with condexes? They're, they're attached, single-family houses, they sometimes attach it with a fence and it, I've done them in Needham, yeah, Wellesley.
No, I'd have to research, I didn't know.
It's almost like a cluster development.
It's like a zero-watt line development?
Yeah, yeah, it's strange, but.
Yeah, that's a possibility too.
And, you know, you can actually group them together, have a lot of.
More open space, yeah.
Open space.
Right.
Less street. I think it's condex. Ever heard of that, Mike, condex?
Yeah, what, my goal was, was to somewhat mimic to what Voshill had, you know, the lots and then, obviously, Mr. Haggerty and Mr. DeMello with larger lots were more concerned about, so we kind of, it's a kind of a transition now, we're almost double what Voshill is, but, you know, obviously we're not as large as Mr. Haggerty's lot or Mr. DeMello's.
That's actually an interesting idea, having the transitional lot size between the two neighborhoods.
Yeah, there was quite a few stories about the history of the property, so, and the current owner.
Yeah, we lived through this.
Yeah.
Kind of complicated.
Yeah, it was. Everybody seems happy with it now. I actually, I mean, the owner of the, the new home has the rights to Perkins Lane, so I, the only way I could use Perkins Lane is if they were willing to grant access to it, but Mr. Haggerty said he, you know, if they did that, he wouldn't, it wouldn't bother him, he'd be fine with it. The Addams are away on vacation, that's the couple that lives there, so they couldn't attend.
All right, who else wants to be heard on this particular bylaw? All right, seeing no one, we will, we will, I have a few concerns, which we'll discuss next time, but we're not going to do it now because we're going to go right into 17 Central Avenue. But the hearing on the zoning bylaw amendments is now closed, unless.
Continue.
There's someone else.
Oh, we're going to, you're closing and then we'll discuss it next week, or you're continuing?
Yeah, we'll just discuss.
That's fine.
So it'll be next, next week will be.
We'll have a discussion, yeah.
The 14th.
And, but it won't be, we don't need a specific time, we'll just discuss it. Okay, 17 Canton Avenue. It's a little unfortunate that Mr. Clark isn't here, since he had all the papers.
They're not in that handy-looking box back there that might hold tons of papers?
We'll give you papers if that's what you want, Mr. Chairman, here.
I'm sure they.
They'll send Mr. Clark.
All right.
No, I think you're okay, Gene, don't worry about it.
Fine, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a, okay, Mr. Sheffield, why don't you introduce yourself and.
I'm a attorney. I'm pleased to represent the owners of 18, 17 Canton Avenue. We're in the midst of construction of their new building, which was started after several meetings with the planning board and site plan approval. In that original process, we did not realize at the time that two additional things were necessary and we thought we should go back to the planning board for a modification of the site plan approval. Those are specifically the creation of a backup electrical generator that we proposed to put at the rear of the property that would be handling natural gas, which is a relatively quiet fuel type for a generator. And that we plan to test the unit on routine tests. And I mentioned two weeks ago that the test would probably be between 10 and 12 minutes once a week during business hours. We also are requesting a canopy so that people would not get soaking wet as they come up the staircase, and that's kind of a detail that we had not included in the original proposal. As for the, that was not approved or was, the decision was deferred to see if weekly tests were necessary. And also, Mr. Crookshank brought up the fact that he had a water line that might.
Sewer.
Run into the property.
Sewer.
Sewer line. And, and that was a possible issue. And also, on the canopy, we kind of never got to it, so we hope we can get it this time. And to answer the issues, we went back to the manufacturer and the manufacturer said that it would be possible to reduce that from a weekly test to a monthly test. And it would be possible to lower the time it would take from the 10 to 12 minutes to a five to seven minutes. My own reaction is that we're talking about a relatively quiet noise occurring during business hours when most of the people that are at home would not be at home, or if they are, it would provide a slight hum for five to 10 minutes. And they said you can cut it down to a seven-minute test. I think it would be better to do the, the job right and to allow the, the particular testing that should be done to the, to the unit. There's a 71 decibel on the, on the generator, and that is after you put in an acoustic hood, which we have already planned to, to put in on the unit, to minimize the noise. For comparison, traffic, street traffic, is generally considered to be 70 decibels. So for the few minutes that it would be tested, and hopefully very few minutes that it would have to be used, because fortunately, we do not have too many electrical outages in that area. We're talking about a relatively mild issue, as I see it. As far as the water main, we were able to get, not the water main, the sewer, we're able to, to get a 1940 plan that showed the selling off of the High Street property, which was owned by the Crookshank estate, prior to its being Crookshank. And they reserved and said the pipes were on the southern end of this property, and when they sold the property, they retained the right to repair.
It's like it goes through Saunders' property?
Yes, it goes through Saunders' property and it doesn't touch our property. Secondly, the.
Bill of Saunders.
The sewer. The, the sewer line ends and terminates before it even gets to our property on High Street.
That's what we dug this up, you didn't, you didn't come, come upon it, because it was not.
Right, right. The myth that it was underneath there the whole time was obviously cleared up.
Yeah.
During the winter.
So it seems quite apparent that he has his sewer line where his sewer line is supposed to be, and when they tested it, they found that it was connected to this 8-inch sewer line running down High Street. And it could not be located on our property for a couple of reasons. One is, never belonged there and they never owned this property, this property was always owned by someone else. And secondly, the sewer line probably went up to accept that connection, and it went up no further. And that stops prior to our property line. So I think that's.
It's addressed and that should not be a concern.
Of the, the Mr. Crookshank or the planning board. As far as the canopy is concerned, we have more clearer plan, clearer picture of what the canopy would look like, and it's going to have emblazoned on it the number 1-7 for 17 Canton Avenue. And it's not going to have any business logos or anything else that would be commercial in nature, if you will.
We've got the canopy down to two designs, and we've got to finalize our selection. First is a very modified barrel vault type canopy that will come out. And the second is a little more of an elaborate canopy that covers the entire porch. Final selection artist to be made by the owner, as to which direction we'll go with this. While the colors are going to be contingent upon, you know, once the house is finished, you know, there's going to be contrast in color to the house.
And I would vote for the minimal one, you know. It's really just to stop the wind and the rain and the snow from hitting the door area. If the larger one is what the town would want, then I would be amenable to that.
And what? If the larger one is what the town wants, I mean, I think the larger one looks better.
More succinct, I just didn't know if, if it was too much. So.
I don't.
We looked at it from the point of view of, is a little enough, or should we go with the, one that covers that.
The Mies Vander Rohe.
Pretty sure Mies would not have designed.
Massive floor.
Yes, I know, but.
Yeah. Not a Mies design, you, you think?
This is definitely not a Mies design. How are you intending to attach the smaller canopy and what are the materials?
Well, the, my experience with awnings are minimal, but I believe it's steel piping that you never see and it's attached to the building. Aluminum, aluminum.
And is it a fabric awning that you're doing?
It's a, you know.
Canvas.
Yeah, canvas fabric that's able to withstand the weather and the elements.
It's not an aluminum shell?
It's on an aluminum shell?
No, it's an aluminum frame.
Aluminum frame.
Space frame for, for that projection, come out about three feet from the face of the building. It would be mechanically fastened to the building, it would not be flashed against water drainage, it would be an applique.
When you speak, why don't you come up and bring, bring that empty chair up, just so that the people can get your, the full scope of what you're saying, and you can identify your.
My name is William Christopher, I'm the architect for the project from Rose Christopher Architecture. The canopy, the, the smaller canopy would be an aluminum frame, similar to a space frame design, so it's, it's almost self-supporting. It would be face anchored to, to the building with expansion shields, but it would not be flashed to the face of the building, which would allow for us to be able to replace the canvas skin as time goes on, because they, they always do wear out in time, and it would not be a Herculean task to replace it.
And the larger canopy, what's the construction?
That would also be an aluminum frame, but it would be more of a post-and-beam type frame, where it would have columns out the outer extremities of the deck and it would anchor to the house the same, in the same direction.
And the columns that are attached to the deck, how are they, are they consistent with the materials?
Yes, they'd be, they'd match the derailing system that's there now, so it would just be an extension of that.
PBC?
PBC, yeah. It would be a little more elaborate to do it. I, I like the minimalist approach, I don't know that I'm in love with the barrel vault design, but I, I think the larger canopy is more consistent with the design of the building.
Yeah, the smaller canopy isn't really to the scale of the building itself.
Doesn't look too good, that's wrong.
Or the, the style.
We had hoped to not have posts, but to go to the depth of the deck, the canopy just became too great.
Yeah.
There's a wind there that would take it right on.
The uplift, you're absolutely right.
And safety is paramount.
I'm not sure I'm wild about the second option either, frankly, but I do like it better than the first one, as far as how it relates to the rest of the building.
Well, what would you like it to look like? Because.
I have a practice of not trying to design a.
Could you give constructive criticism that might be more enlightening?
I'm not sure about the arch portion of the roof here. There's nothing else like that on the building. I would like, you know, you have, or should have one that's done, a very traditional looking building, and so I think anything that is going to be essentially attached to that building should not look like something that's simply being pasted onto the building, but should look like it's an integral part of the entire design. And I don't see that this design, of this particular awning structure, it does not feel like it's an integral part of the entire design.
Would you agree that a shed dorm type canopy would be more consistent with the period without the implied barrel vault in the middle?
Yeah, I think so. The implied barrel vault, I don't think will work with this building.
The idea was Robert Venturi's complexity and contradiction, that the round form would be bringing the attention to the entrance, that was the only reason that we, we thought about that. But no one is madly in love with this design, so.
No motion.
My, my instructions were, let's get it approved so we can move on, so. We would gladly, I can, I'll edit that and submit that to the board for a staff review so that they can see it, yes.
Just one question, you have nothing on the front entrance coming in?
No, no.
No, no, no.
I know, but it's just that, why here and why not there, you know?
Because the front entrance is a side, doesn't exist.
Kept it for the integrity of the building and the town.
That door doesn't open.
Door doesn't open.
Doesn't open.
Hasn't opened in years. Hasn't opened in years.
The intention and the commitment that was made early on in the process is that we would mimic the original building in every detail, and we did. Programmatically, inside the space, that door doesn't work, and it doesn't work for, you know, people using it, there will not be a lot of people walking up to this facility, so we have got the door sealed.
You know, the song, "You can keep on knocking, but you can't come in"?
Actually, according to the plans that were submitted, the intention was to retain the, not just to mimic the building, but to retain at least a portion of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the existing building to remain, that was written. Yeah, the existing building to remain, that was written on there. So we would definitely appreciate, since that wasn't retained, looking as much as like the original as possible. And because of that, the consistency of this additional piece with the remainder of the design is important.
Very good.
So I would ask you if the board would approve the modification of the site plan reviewed?
We're going to hear from the people. This is probably good.
But I want to say what I asked.
All right, yes.
Fine.
I'd like to see a plan of the shed dormer for approval. Secondly, have you submitted a landscape plan to us?
Yes, early on.
Early on. Phase one?
Well, it's never, it never changed. The drainage plan changed because the town requested it to change.
Well, have we seen, are there any plantings around the entry, entrance way?
I can't speak off the top of my head, but-
Yes, there are some. We have submitted a landscape plan to this board and to the building department.
It's been approved by the-
This is a rendering.
Included lighting and the type of lighting. And we talked about what shouldn't be too bright and, you know, I remember that.
That's right. We don't want any overspill on the-
Like lighting everywhere.
Exactly.
Right.
Very important.
And rightly so.
So you're asking approval. Okay, I get it. Let's see what people have to say about this. I did send George Lovely an email saying it would be nice to detail the, what needs to be done. So let's see what we get. Mr. Sheffield, why don't you render your seat?
I would be more than happy to.
Or perhaps you could sit where the architect has just vacated and, okay, who else wants to be heard on this plan?
Nobody.
All right, we're not hearing anyone wanting to be heard. Now, we've got a number of housekeeping items. One is you, Emily-
Yes.
Asked, could we hear from the historical commission as to whether or not, and it just happened that they're here?
What a coincidence.
Hear from the historical commission on this?
This, the issue was that initially, we said we want this facade preserved because it's, that's what the deal is, that it's going to be preserved. And then they said that they tried, they were going to move it, but it was going to fall down into a pile of rubble.
Out of those Beatles.
And they consulted with the historical commission and got your blessing for reconstruction.
I think that's kind of an overstatement. They did indeed meet with the historical commission and portrayed the building as standing out of habit as opposed to anything else. And they said there was simply no way that they could preserve virtually any of the We felt, kind of backed into the corner. They had represented that they were going to do certain things. They said it was physically impossible to do them. So that they would preserve some part of one of the original walls within one of the new walls so that they could say they did that. And would reconstruct the building to look as much like the original as they could possibly do. Hence the non-opening front door. We know the front facade of the building is indeed higher than the original one because they needed that space for the second floor and the whole thing. But presumably, the new building would resemble as best they could as the old one. And we know that the design, the neighbors were very involved in the design of the whole thing. My feeling is the neighbors are kind of shocked at the bulk of the building. Now, we know that in many cases, they only added a second floor to what was already in place on the first floor. But the front of the building, the nine-bay colonial structure facing Canton Avenue, pretty much hid what was behind it because it was one-story. Now, of course, that's all two-story. So the bulk of the building is very different. Yes, the facade of the building looks very much the same as it did. And I suppose if you, if you think about it, better that we have a building which looks very much like what was there before than not having a building at all, which is what we have recently run into. So I think it's, to some extent, it's a compromise.
Is the paint color, the gray, a little lighter than it used to be?
What's on the house now, I trust, is not the final color of the house.
No, it's not the final. It's the primer. It is going to be the same color that were on the, the primer may be different, but the paint's different.
Okay, I just, you know, that's a question. Now, as you recall, Mr. Clark was going to consult with the building commissioner as to other possible locations of the generator.
Right.
And-
I assume he's on his way.
You assume that he's on his way. Well, lawyers seem to have gotten here.
Exactly. That would be why it's different.
Selective meeting.
Maybe he stopped or-
Selective meeting.
Well, let's see if we can find anything in this box of materials that might be enlightening.
Here's a cell phone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, it's getting very close to that.
Here is a folder entitled 17 Canton Avenue.
Ah, possibilities.
Sounds like it.
What else did we, we had a, I did talk to George Lovely and he was going to make a list of-
Outstanding items.
Additional items that need to be done to the facade.
Do you think we should wait for the building to finish before we ever do that?
Just out of curiosity, because it's germane to your question, what is the projected completion date at this point?
Million-dollar question.
As it is in so much construction.
April, May, June.
Okay.
At least I don't know when the temper out and stay at the second level, I do. If we hit August, we will be at a three-year time when I actually purchase the property. So I'm trying to avoid a 36-month run.
And I'm right in remembering, because it was a while back that we did this, that this was for your, your firm is taking up the whole space, is that right?
Well, at the time, we owned nursing homes and we had a law office and a professional management. So we, the use is professional office building.
Right.
We sold our, in the long time of construction, planning and meetings, we've since sold two of the three nursing homes and we'll be selling the third. So my guess is there'll be a bunch of lawyers running around.
But still the same use?
It's a professional use, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, now, the answer to your question is this. When we amend this special permit to say, make sure you've got the facade right, then the enforcement authority becomes the building commissioner. And the more help the building commissioner can get in determining that the facade is right, the better. So waiting until they've completed their work and then the building inspector comes up and says, take a look, what do you think? Is it the same or not? If there were a punch list of items that had to be done, that would be a significant help.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may speak, we put picture of what the building would look like on the application. It was approved by the planning board. We are going through construction. We are maybe three months away from completion. I don't think it's appropriate to come in, you know, and now say, well, these are the things you have done, these are the things you haven't done.
I think that the things you haven't done, you're not going to complete this project unless you do the things you haven't done. And if you don't know what the things you haven't done are, you may not do some of them. And then you're not going to gather an occupancy permit. So having a punch list, how you can possibly object to that is, yes.
So I do, yeah, punch list is not an issue. I guess the, so we need to go back to the reason why this came up. And I had been in contact with George via email. I left the room last time and I get a couple of days and I gave him the benefit of those days, thinking somebody would call him. That didn't happen.
That someone would call him?
You know, communicate to George.
I communicated with him.
Well, in the time period that I gave, to the time period that I contacted him, his response to me was, you know, I'm not the architect of record. And I said, look, yeah, I get that. And really goes to the question of the punch list. I've since invited George to meet me at the property, meet the architect, meet the lawyer. This issue came up because of construction being done and an error occurring, right? We wouldn't be discussing the finishes if it wasn't for that. And I think what Bob is saying, somewhere between, George is not the final say. We agreed, we have a plan, it was approved. We just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what that punch list has to be. But I agree, we would not just, we would not rubber stamp the punch list. We'd let you look at it and we'd agree, if it were an unreasonable punch list, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't require it. But I mean- Again, I don't have a-
If I'm sorry you haven't done, just saying, kick the can down the road, let the building commissioner deal with it, is, you know, it isn't a good way of doing business.
I'm really not suggesting that there's a problem with the punches.
I am, I did the work.
Okay.
Before the-
Why don't you make the punch list?
Come up, come up.
Come up and join us.
Which was what I was starting to say.
Oh, God.
Mr. Lovely has been an unbelievable asset throughout this entire process and I will never discount the attitude and energy that he adds to this project. The thing that I don't want to see happen is I don't want this to become a public discussion about how we should rethink the front of this building. As has been said here at the hearing, there is a record set of drawings with the building department that illustrates exactly what was approved. Before I invite the building inspector out for a final inspection, I have to sign off on that building. And that's a professional liability on my part. So believe me, there will not be a punch list requested or wanted. You want to do it, do it. But it won't be warranted because the inspector will not be asked out until I finish my inspection, which has not happened in completeness yet. As I've said, the building's not finished.
Why don't you specify what else has to be done?
So, yes.
With all due respect, I'm not sure this is within our authority.
No.
We have signed off on a site plan approval. We expect them to meet the requirements of the site plan approval. We expect the building inspector to enforce that site plan approval. I'm still pretty ticked off about the fact that you didn't come back to tell us that you were changing, the fact that you weren't going to keep the building. But going forward, since there's not much that we can do about that now, going forward, they have a responsibility to meet these guidelines and I expect them to do that. And then if they don't, then the building inspector has a right to come in and enforce it under the bylaws of the town and under the state building code, but not us. We do not have enforcement rights.
I hear what you're saying and I think that that is a minimalist view. It goes with the-
Mies Van der Rohe, yes.
A little awning. A minimalist view of the planning board's jurisdiction. I mean, we've done a site, they one amended site plan. The current situation is not as shown on the site plan that was approved.
Yes.
And, you know, it does seem to me that, that it is, it is within our authority to make sure that they're going to do what we required. And they haven't done it yet. And they say that, and they say that.
They have not finished.
I understand. They say they're two months from completion.
Or three or five, but-
Or whatever.
Yes.
But still, still, it isn't as specified. They didn't save the front, they didn't come to the planning board.
Agreed.
And right there is an amendment to the site plan that you're suggesting. So, you know, since we're making a new facade.
We were, we-
There is no board, there is no-
There was a new facade.
Never told us you were making new facade.
Definitely told you that.
You told us after you made the new facade.
Definitely told you that there's a new facade. We said that some of the building, original building interior would be retained if we could relocate the top, build a foundation and bring it back over, which proved to be impossible. But we always said that, that the front of the building, et cetera, would be replicated.
No, that's not what you said.
I'd like to hear Mike's question.
Is, are we expecting that the building inspector would point out small architectural details that have no relevance to, like, building code?
Exactly.
I'm expecting that-
Because he is a Mies Van der Rohe fan himself.
But I mean, I would expect that the building inspector, his sole purpose would be to make sure that everything's to code.
And that it meets the requirements of the site plan approval. He has to do that, yes.
I think that's, that's a lot.
Yes.
And I just can't see any reason why anybody would object to a punch list coming from, lack of better terms, the other side. It's very seldom a majority of, that the guy who develops the punch list is the guy that owns the property.
And I understand that. What I'm questioning is our authority as a planning board-
With all due respect.
-to develop that punch list. I think the building inspector should absolutely develop the punch list.
It would help the building inspector if we had a punch list for him to look at.
I think that we're on shaky legal ground, is what I'm saying.
This is so lucky that the room is full of lawyers.
They'll all say something different.
Is Judge Lovely going to have a punch list?
I don't know.
May I?
Yes. Why don't you do a punch list?
I intend to do a punch list. That's the way the nature of- If you would like to have Mr. Lovely do a punch list?
No.
Fine.
You do the punch list.
Please let me finish. Fine, do it. But please let us finish the building and then do the punch list. Doing a punch list now is kind of silly.
Finishing the building is what we're all talking about.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, a punch list simply says, put your returns on the, I mean, you know, a punch list is stuff you would be doing anyhow.
Maybe what we have got here is we've got a problem with definitions of terms. Alex, what do you mean when you say a punch list?
A punch list is incomplete items.
Got the item, cross the T.
So I understand that that's what a punch list is. Which items in particular are you defining as the ones that would be on your punch list?
You have to review, you have to review the building to look at it and compare it to the plans and develop the punch list. I mean, you don't know ahead of time what's going to be on the punch list.
Because-
But my experience is I don't build buildings and I don't build residential or commercial properties, I mean, heavy civil. But the punch list typically does come in prior to the end of the project, but near the end of the project. Because as we've already heard on some things here, they happen and then you have a punch list that says, well, you didn't do it. Well, now it's too late.
Right. But we're not at that point yet.
No, but we're approaching that point. So now, it would seem to me that now is the proper time for the punch list.
And it's true.
As you're headed home, you should know, do the punches.
As the owner, it's good for me that there's a punch list. Absolutely. The punch list is something that I want the contractor and the architect to work on, not someone outside of my responsibility or control. If you choose to have someone walk around the building and I invite them in to write a punch list, have at it. But it can't be the controlling, it cannot be the controlling process.
Why doesn't your architect do a punch list saying that these are the things that I'm going to get done before the building- I'm going to get done before the building is completed? And then we'll look at it and if there's any problem, we'll give you a call.
Again, I have no problem with that.
All right.
Alex, usually the other side, as Mike said, the other side.
With all due respect, the old, you know, we'll keep, you know, watching the hen house.
Yeah. I mean, for instance, may I speak, for instance, we left last week, right, a couple weeks ago, and there were things that were not right and we had to fix them. Some of those things are fixed. They're visible and you would see that. If I had submitted that tonight, they would be fixed, there'd be a check off the punch list. It's a roaming document. Things will, you know, change. But we are more than amenable to have my team submit a punch list that people can review and comment on.
I would think if there's a resource available, it would be good to have some...
Well, I asked Mr. Lovely and I thought he was going to do it, but apparently he...
But he's a time citizen.
Why should he get involved with this? He insured.
As a neighborly thing, I invited him over to meet us. I mean, it's not like we're not trying to get a balance in.
Fine. I mean, this is not the end of the world, but it's finding to that...
Mr. Lovely misses something, Alex.
Why would it be held responsible?
He took the project out of the mix.
He just brought him in five hours later. Well, he can come and he's been invited, he will continue to be invited, he's been very helpful to us.
They're going to do their punch list. We'll see if Mr. Lovely can come up with a punch list and...
Who does the punch list for the landscaping?
The whole landscape plan needs to be complied with.
I can comment on punch lists and my responsibility as the owner of the property.
We understand the landscaping, well, it's going to be according to the plan, but we're trying to do a punch list on the landscaping because we've got a plan and they haven't done the landscaping yet.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. I read somewhere today, maybe somebody can refresh me where I saw it. I read somewhere today that High Street is going to be rebuilt. Did anybody read that?
I read something that contains derogatory statements about sleep I had. That was in Mr. Kershank's memo to somebody about deed that he sent out that had nothing to do with my property.
Yeah, wall is being rebuilt.
I have only heard that someone wants to take apart the wall. I've gone to the town, I've sent my lawyer to the town to talk about it and no one wants to talk about it, so I really don't know about it.
Brian Joyce got the money, I forget the grant.
It's the Mass Works grant.
Mass Works grant.
Well, if the land is going to be rebuilt High Street...
Sure.
Why not take, we move, fix the wall at the same time? Joe Wall, correct?
It is my wall and there's nothing wrong with the wall.
Looks to me like it's ready to go.
You want to pay for it?
No, what I'm saying is why not work with the town on this and get it done once and for all?
Like I said, two seconds before, when you brought it up, I sent my attorney, my contractor, I have had no affirmation that someone wants me to talk in any way about fixing that wall outside of this meeting.
I think it's incumbent upon the planning board to talk to DPW and see if they want to have a new...
As far as I'm concerned, my budget is here and the building is being built as I planned. If someone wants to fix the wall and come to it with a Brian Joyce grant, have at it. I've been amenable to working with everybody.
Is the wall on your property?
It is my wall.
So it's your wall? It's your money?
My money, baby.
But it's my understanding that this mass grant is, they're going to take care of the wall. This is what...
I don't know, mass grant is public interest.
There is some question during this discussion, which I've had, you know, I sent a lawyer to the town to ask the question, that whether or not they needed the grassy area and whether or not they needed parts of my land for the wall and all that. But none of that's ever been discussed with me in any formal way and I'm willing to talk about it if, but I am not interested in spending any more money on 17 Canton Avenue.
Any more than you have to.
That I've already...
And fully completed the path.
Go ahead. I'm in the process.
Okay, now, now, now.
Yes.
As you know, Mr. Clark hasn't reported on his conversation with the building inspector as to alternative locations of the generator. It is going to have a concrete block enclosure, right?
That was my suggestion, I don't know if they accepted it.
We should talk about what works and what doesn't work and what we found out and...
What we found out.
Wouldn't that be helpful?
Yes.
Number one, there were a lot of boundary conversations about how close things were.
Right.
And we are, did we submit?
It's in the package.
It's in there. And, you know, where we are placing it is the best possible location considering the neighbors.
It's the last page of your package that I used in the last one.
There is some discussion about putting it in the building. I am not interested in putting in the building. I am interested in finding a place outside that works for everyone. We think that is still the best.
Where is that? Is that A?
Who's got the...
Is that this thing?
That's the location of the abutting buildings in relationship to...
Yeah, we listened to 30 feet...
A is just the marker that that's the address.
This is what I submitted with the application.
Yeah.
No.
What is A?
A is just the marker when you do Google Maps or Yahoo Maps.
Yeah, but where is the generator?
On this? It's not on this.
Well, we have.
It was very helpful then.
I never did say it was, sir.
So we provide a boundary...
It's only illustration that Bob just put before.
On the plan.
Yes.
We submitted...
It is on the plan, take it back, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, this is a big disappointment to me personally.
Which, which part of it?
The fact that we're not getting the input from the building inspector.
We can put it anywhere you would like it to be. What we tried to do was to put it in a position that would offer the noise for the people nearby. And the amount of noise is essentially, in my position, negligible.
And this is why we, we, I mean, I understand, this is what you said last time. And we said, let's ask the building inspector where we could put this thing.
Yep.
Other than here. They don't think it's bad. And, you know, we don't, we don't know what the building inspector, whether he was consulted, we don't know what he may have said. He may have said, look, this is a perfect location for it and pointed to the plan and... Yes?
I was just going to say, given that we have to review the canopy as well, we could put this off to our increasingly long March 14th meeting and get the information from the...
One thing here is, I don't, I never, it always confuses me why people don't give the simple information. You started to allude that I thought it would show up on here, but whatever, it's not on here. They give us a plan and it's on here, but you don't even scale on the plan where it's located on here. I mean, you did all kind of nice scaling here on Google or whatever, I guess.
What do you mean scale?
Well, if you had indicated that that's the corner of the building and the corner of the building you're indicating is 50 feet from this property and the back side's 150 and 175, but yet you don't take the same corner of the building and tell me how far out the generator is, so that I can relatively speak to it on this plan.
This might be more helpful. Right near the garage.
No, that doesn't tell me anything.
No, because you can't actually see the garage on here, so there's no...
You add the rear corner, the rear of the building, that's, I thought that would be implicit and understood.
But you gave all these dimensions, but what did these dimensions do? Because I can't, I can't relate to where the generator is relative to these dimensions. Do you?
Obviously is.
Just from physically understanding aside, walking out there, maybe.
It's a small apartment. It doesn't need market right now, he feels comfortable in town and then we can show. The point of this, I kind of thought, was last time, we heard 30 feet, 50 feet, they're a considerable feet from my property line alone.
But that's just what I'm getting at. You've shown that the edge of the building is 50...
You know it's 10 feet from the drawings we, from the property line, from the drawings we submitted. That's what we submitted last time before we had to come back today.
But that wasn't my point. If you'll only let me finish, I'm...
Don't tell me where the generator is on it.
You've indicated that building is 50 feet from this structure, 150 feet from this structure, 175 feet from that structure, 150, 100. In the whole purpose of this conversation was the generator, but you haven't indicated where the generator is relative to these...
The intention was to show a relative location of abutting buildings.
All you have to do is put a measure in there. You have to take a tape off the corner of the building to tell us how many feet it was from the edge of the building.
You going to say that?
Okay. Yeah, I did say.
Okay. Multiple times doesn't make it change anything.
It may help sometimes.
I don't think so. The reality is, the reality is, there was no requirement for the location of this generator. We tried to pick the spot that we thought was appropriate to minimize the impact on the community and that's why we chose that area 10 feet off the edge of the building. I was asked to produce an illustration that represented the relationship of the building to the other buildings. That's what I was asked.
Not the generator, just the building to the buildings.
That's what I was asked.
That's what you did, I guess.
Now, we don't know, but we're going to have to write up an amendment and we can write it up to have it in the appropriate spot as determined by the building inspector.
Mr. Chairman, we don't know if Bill Clark is, because he's not here, he's with the selectmen.
I understand that, I understand that, but having these people come in week after week after week for on a, on a, on amendment, it doesn't...
I don't, I have a cell phone, he has a cell phone.
I just texted him, he hasn't responded. He may be in the meeting itself.
An executive session is, some issues.
You know, I mean, that's fine, but this is our meeting night and Mr. Clark should be at our meeting, in my view.
I would second that.
I suggest that I will write a decision as best I can. We will find out from the building inspector where the generator should go and we'll put it there.
We can ask him to...
And we will buffer it with cement blocks. And we will landscape the cement wall.
They already, appears they already attended to that.
Well, no, that's just, you know, English...
Let me ask about the concrete blocks, why are you recommending a closure?
Buffer, unless you come up with something better.
Concrete block will not buffer the sound.
It's not a buffer.
Can I speak?
It throws it up and then...
He found a fencing system that is made for it and do we have the specs tonight, anybody?
Just give us the specs, give us the specs.
So we can submit the fencing specs?
Put down fencing system. I'm going to write a decision which we are going to vote on next time. Because we've had, we've had, this is, we're not going to, we're not going to continue this forever.
Alex, are you qualified to say what, how far the generator should be away from someplace?
The building inspector is going to do that.
He's going to ask someone to...
So you're going to suggest that he...
It's going to be as specified by the building inspector.
At some point, he's going to submit the number.
Why don't we have the building inspector come?
Because he won't, he won't do it.
He doesn't come.
The other thing, quite honestly, the zoning bylaws don't, do not speak to the decimal ratings of property lines. Most, most towns have that in their zoning so that you know what your guideline is and what you're shooting for. But that does not exist.
I think that the fact that you've got a good buffering system headline, it probably will work beautifully for the air conditioners too.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. This is, this is good. I think that it's basically only the location of the generator, then get us those specs and have you going to get us the punch list.
The wall has to be addressed along High Street because there are plans out there that show some other entity is going to take care of that.
No, if it's their wall, it's their wall. Then no other entity can take care of it. If it's their wall, it's their wall. No other entity can go onto your property and do stuff to your wall.
We'll give them permission.
Sure, they, they're not going to look at gift houses in the mouth.
But they're going to get those, you can't do...
Use all the other people's name.
Private property.
Well, it's been there, it's been part of the integrity of the old building. You know, I don't know why everybody's so against the present, the preservation of the wall.
All right.
It's granted.
Okay. Well, it will continue to be granted. So is that how we're going to do it?
Yep.
Okay, yep?
Agreed.
Yep, yep?
What's the motion?
There's no motion.
No motion?
It's how we're going to do it. It's how we're going to do it.
Alex is going to write the decision first, review it the next meeting.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, now, we've completed our public business.
All right, we'll have to wait for Mr. Daffy to return.
And we're going to wait for Mr. Daffy to return.
In the meantime, I could give you a very quick update on the master plan process.
I think that would be delightful.
Excellent. So we just had our second public forum, which was Tuesday. It was at Cunningham Hall, started at 6:30. The official count was about 66 people. We divvied up once again into different groups. I'm pleased to say that Mike was there and was very helpful. We also had a number of other town officials there, which is excellent. Alex, of course, you had attended the first one and that was greatly appreciated. And the next step is for Brown Walker to incorporate all of the information they received at the first two public forums and they will be reporting to us again on March 14th at our regular meeting, so it will be a busy meeting. If necessary, we could push that off to the 28th, so think about that. But the current schedule is for them to do it on the 14th. I just note how many...
We'll look at the, we'll look at the agenda for the...
Okay, and let me know so I can give them warning.
Because there's no point in having a feel-good session with people wanting to go home.
It wouldn't necessarily be a feel-good session, it's intended to be an informative session.
And a working session.
And a working session. So let me know what you prefer.
Hopefully a session that engenders significant goodwill because the whole point of the visioning process is to do that.
Absolutely.
All right.
And then the third forum will be in late April. We are working on a precise date and location at the moment, probably either the high school or the junior high, but I will get back to you on that when we know better. And then they will be asking for further and final public input at that meeting.
That's fantastic.
The 14th or the 28th would be easy either way for them.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, as far as fit, any type of...
Precisely, because it's going to be late April. As I saw our agenda powering up, I thought it would be best to do that. And that was Bill.
Now...
I don't know if these people heard it or not, but the attorney, Conley's, was killed last night in a lawsuit.
Oh, my God.
By a car, an armchair accident. Kai hit him.
That's awful.
One of my cousins was killed in the same location.
He's not married, he's got two children, very sad.
That's horrible.
I do use to make. They will show a picture of him, but that's who, that's who it is.
Okay.
The attorney, Conley said. I think you can picture him.
I heard that there had been an accident, I didn't catch the, the name to the, the person. Oh, that's horrible.
It's not a rain, it's, you know...
A great accolade from the, some of the city leaders as being a great guy to promote participation in the, in the process. So, I guess so long, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.